Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. Invitation Marcus?
Hey. It's very heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercies to us for the rain that's come and it's going to continue to come. We appreciate it. We appreciate all your good pleasure and your blessings upon us. We ask Heavenly Father that you bless our meeting tonight as we discuss issues that are important to the borough and we ask that you would just be with our citizens, keep them calm and understanding that in these difficult times of uncertainty, that there is a certainty and that comes from your kingdom and we thank you for that. And we pray Heavenly Father that you would continue to be with our first responders, our police, our fire, our employees at the borough. We thank you for all their efforts on behalf of our citizens. And thank you for our citizens, for the town that they've made and continue to build. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, time for the pledge.
Boy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
To the republic.
Which stands.
One nation, God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice.
For all.
Alright, roll call.
Mr. Crouch, this is Deal.
Mr. Erickson. Mr. Darius. Mr. Sinkovitz.
Here.
Mr. Penner.
Here.
Alright, in the consent agenda, you have the meeting minutes from September 29th and October 13th. Any questions about those?
Yes, sir.
Alright, approval of bills. Page. Alright, so those bills are in your packet. There is one minor change which I'll get to later. Alright, so we have Chamberlain Winger sanitation $295. Boston Mutual $195.50. Edmund Fuels $333.26. Higher Information Group $29.4 cents. AB Martin Supplies $102.96. PA Municipal Code Alliance $2067.35. Morefield Communications $137.16. Higher Information Group $374. Sailor's Market $71.53. Crime Intervention Alarm $831. Barry Tire $2.50. The AM Trust that's in your packet, you can remove that. That's been paid another way. And a Daco $379.56. Sherwin-Williams Pay $8.82. Irwin McKnight PC $180. Irwin McKnight PC $1,059.30. News Chronicle $335 even. That's for total out of the general fund bills, $6,401.98. Under Highway Aid Bills, Oak Ridge Equipment $612.99. For a total out of the Highway Aid Bills, $612.99. Any questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Alright, moving on to moving on to the treasures report. These are all these are all balances as of September 30th, 2020. So general fund checking $5,267.43. Rental fund checking $1,411.40. Street lighting $607.35. Fire tax $55,120.54. Expense account. The general expense account $2,063.29. Newville Area Events $5,131.40. Highway Aid and Liquid Fuels Checking $15,040.40. Payroll Checking $4,958.68. Pension, the police pension plan $348,671.39. The non-uniform pension plan $457,054.49. The Borough Joint Veteran Council accounts $946.63. Capital Improvement Fund $1,467.25. And the Tax Anticipation Line Fund $2,738.26. Any questions on those? Alright, you have written reports in your packet from everybody listed there except for the fire chief. So there's a police chief, a mayor's report, zoning code enforcement officer, street superintendent, chief plants operator, and the field operations report. There's also reports from oh, I got the zoning and codes officer. Okay, any questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve this consent agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
It's moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second and a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion case. Alright, moving down to verbal reports, please. I think Chief's on here. Go ahead, Chief.
Can you hear me?
Can.
Okay, because I can't see anything. My picture's frozen for some reason.
See you. I can see if that helps you.
Oh, there he is.
There you are.
Well, I still can't see anything, but I will go ahead.
We can see you.
That's strange.
Creepy, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Police report for the month of September. Calls for service for the month. We're up 319 calls for service. We're back to the numbers of a couple of years ago when we had four officers. Traffic enforcement for the month. Citations issued was 86. Traffic warnings for the month was 21. Parking violations, one. Patrol vehicle mileage for the month of September was 2,273 miles. And total warrants outstanding. We actually made a little progress on that, too. That is down to 31. Any questions on any of that?
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything else.
Chief, I have one question.
Go ahead.
License plate reader, is that working out pretty well?
It's working really well.
Is it?
Yes, it makes our job a lot easier.
Yeah, Chief, I have a question, too. At our last public session, we talked about a couple of items related to noise. We talked to the Wilkes-Barre ordinance and the EPA label matching program. And then we decided we would turn that over to you to get your comments on it. Do you want to talk about that at all?
Yes, everybody should have gotten a an email back in relation to that. There should be about 13 points I made. Just in summary, as far as exhaust and muffler noise in the state of Pennsylvania, it's regulated by Title 67, which is the state inspection code. It's very specific on what we can enforce. Essentially, all we can enforce really on the roadside is making sure that the baffles are inside the muffler. Other than that, it requires a noise study. To do the noise study, it requires a specific set of equipment, a specific set of circumstances. Those are very hard to meet, especially inside the borough. You have to set up a testing site and measure the decibels of the traffic. That requires that there be no traffic, so a string of cars would be too much noise to measure a specific vehicle. There can't be any houses, buildings, fire hydrants, telephone poles, or high curbing that would reflect the noisy, the noise. No loose stones, no potholes. No weather, no wind, no rain, that sort of thing. Very specific, essentially almost totally unenforceable for us when it comes to what the state inspection code states. As far as the EPA label program, there's no one that I know that's enforcing that. I don't even know how we would enforce a federal regulation. So that would be the issue with that. I don't know if you have any questions on top of that or not.
Well, I agree with you on the question of the points you made, the ones about, you know, having to get quantitative values and buy all that machinery. I just don't think there's any value in that. I don't think those cases tend to lead anywhere and they tend to get thrown out.
Correct.
But on the, on the Wilkes-Barre thing, you know, I've looked at that proposal, there's their ordinance and one of the things that it does, that ours does not, is it specifically cites vehicle noise. And it makes it clear that vehicle noise is something that is prohibited. And they talk specifically, specifically about racing motors. So that's how they, you know, sort of get at that. Ours really just talks about motor vehicles in the context of leaving your engine running and honking your horn. So it doesn't really give you much by a way of authorization to enforce. And I think it would be useful for us to talk to the Wilkes-Barre people to see what kind of success they're having. From what I understand, after a year or so, it's working out pretty well. So you know, I think it would be worth having a conversation with them to talk to them about how it's working, what the issues are. Are they having success with it? Because there might be aspects of that that we might want to consider. And then also on the label matching thing. By federal law, we can adopt the language in the Noise Control Act, provided, you know, you have support from the state. And I'm not sure what the state's situation is. I looked on Westlaw and it looks to me like you could. In fact, that municipalities can, under certain circumstances, adopt provisions from that law, as long as they're identical. So I think it would be useful to look a little further into whether that's actually available to us, because I think that's the easiest and most effective way we could do it. The label matching program, where you simply have to look at the exhaust and look at the chassis and if the labels don't match, then it's been tampered with and then it's citable. And I think both of those things are worth further consideration. So I don't know. What do you think?
I mean, it doesn't hurt to speak with Wilkes-Barre on how they've made out enforcing it. It wouldn't directly correlate to how we would make out enforcing it. I know we have trouble just enforcing the current noise ordinance as it is. We've had multiple cases that didn't make it through the district justice. Pretty much as a requirement over there that there's a complainant and the complainant can't be the police department. That's where we've ran into a few issues over there. With the Noise Control Act, what I've read up on that, it's not really supported very well in the state of Pennsylvania. Like you said, we have to adopt those rules through our ordinance to enforce that. I'm not sure where we'd fall in with that, being that we're going to make the rules here in the borough more restrictive than what they are some other places. That may cause an issue with us as far as enforcement goes. As far as the total noise ordinance for Wilkes-Barre, the majority of it, I think, was pretty much the same as ours. There might be some more there with the with the vehicles. We could look into that and see how they're, they're making out with that. Specifically, the issue that we've been having is related to probably three different motorcycles in the borough, which we've identified all those and we know we have issues with those individual motorcycles and individual operators and we have been dealing with them before this issue even came up. Truthfully, over the last couple of weeks, I think some of that has subsided.
Well.
I don't know if you've been hearing anything over the last few weeks.
Yeah, last weekend, it was pretty loud there for a while. I mean, I
When it's loud, somebody has to call. I mean, if somebody doesn't call into the station then or dispatch, we're not going to know. And as far as I know, we've not received any reports on station when the officers are there to go out and check into that.
Well, I mean, there are people that do raise concerns about it. I mean, we had an email chain two weeks ago that we were all on, many of us were on. And I specifically raised this issue and asked what could be done about it and I've gotten a reply. I've also called on
Emailing isn't going to do anything. You need to call dispatch when it's happening so we can get out there and hear it for ourselves. The following day or the following couple of days isn't going to help. We have to be there when it's, when it's happening.
Yeah, well, this was, this was a real time chain. I mean, this was going on while this email was going, but you know, I don't want to belabor that. I think what I'm just trying to say here is that if we had some more tools, it might be easier for you to enforce. I think our ordinance is pretty general. And it does not get specifically to the issue of motorcycle noise, which is a big problem. And the Wilkes-Barre one does. So I think we need to look at that. And the EPA one can be adopted by municipalities. I'm not aware of any bars to it in Pennsylvania, but I'm not a lawyer. And I think we need to have somebody actually look at whether this is, would be applicable. If we could pass it, there is language that the EPA has provided. But if you adopt it, it matches their language. And so then you're in conformity with that and those standards apply. So I think that needs to be looked at. I'm pushing on this because, you know, my concern is economic development. That's on the liaison to the EDA. So I'm very concerned about what affects economic development here. And one of the things I'm really concerned about is that we're trying to attract small businesses here and young families who want to live here. And noise is a real deterrent. There's a fair amount of research on this that noise, you know, contributes to urban blight. And, you know, we don't want to be a town that's looked at as one where, you know, it's, it's too noisy to live in. Or are there things going on there? We don't want to be part of it. So that's my take here, is if there are some tools that we can provide that would help to enforce controls over unnecessary noise, I think we ought to just look at them a little harder.
May I interject here? I'm sorry I didn't get, I saw your email, Jack, but I wasn't able to return your call. The noise that you're talking about as far as caused, as part of blight. And as I've looked at these kinds of things, that's regarding a more constant noise situation or a regular noise situation, say trains going through, through an area or airplanes, factory noise, that sort of thing. Random noise like this, I don't know is going to factor in as much. The but the, the other thing is, I'm, I'm a little concerned. We're, we're spending a lot of time on something that I am talking about spending thousands of dollars to enforce something that is somewhat of a random issue. It's, it's as Todd has noted, it's, it's, in this case, it's individuals already are causing problems elsewhere. When I lived, when we lived on, for the time we've lived in Newville, for a good while, there was a problem with pickups with modified exhaust that would roar down Big Spring Avenue. And as time passed, that, I think some of those were addressed by our department. And, and that has, it's very rare that I hear that now. The, you talk about how loud it is and I can appreciate that. However, I can tell you that as loud as you say it is, I hear nothing of it where I, where I live. And I'm not that far away in all things considered. My guess would be that some of what makes it so loud for you is the way things are echoing off buildings around there and it's, it's very loud at your house. And because we've experienced that at our house, there was we thought, sure, that somebody directly behind us was doing something. It was causing a lot, seemed loud at our house. But when I traced it down, it was halfway down the alley and it was just the way the the sound was echoing off the buildings and it sounded very loud in our living room. But it was, it was nothing right by our house. So I think there are a number of factors involved here that I realize it's, it's causing an issue for, for you at your house and it's making things uncomfortable there to live while this is going on. But I guess I am questioning how much whether it's a big enough issue is borough-wide to spend a great amount of time and money trying to address, address it when we already have an ordinance and means of, of to enforce.
Just, just to interject. I mean, I can vouch that, you know, this isn't just a simple motorcycle driving by. There, there were days and we're talking days throughout the week, throughout the weekend, day and night, where it was almost like they were working on their motorcycle and they just gun it and it, and they, and it's revving engines. You probably could say if it was lasting an hour or if out of an hour, they're probably revving engines 20 minutes out of that hour. It's, again, it's not a simple drive-by. It's almost like there's a race, race shop next door. And, you know, Chief, I, one of my questions is, you know, like, the unnecessary in the Wilks ordinance, they have like an unnatural acceleration or something along those lines. We don't have anything like that in our, in our current, current one, correct?
No.
I mean, to me, that's the, that could be the biggest issue and I don't know how, you would have to tell me how enforceable is something like that. It is not unusual for somebody to come up Fairfield Street, stop at the intersection of Big Spring and Fairfield, and then they gun it on Vine Street and you can, they stop at the medical center, turn right and you can hear them drive the whole way up, up over the hill, heading out towards 233. I mean, that, that is not unusual. You know, they're clearly not accelerating like a normal person does. But, you know, I think, I think what Jack's saying is there, there might be some things in that ordinance that would be helpful. I'm not, I'm not one who thinks that we can possibly stand outside with a decibel reader and, and get people that way. That's not what I'm thinking. But there certainly is more, I think there's more of this unnatural acceleration going on than, than what maybe people think.
Yeah. And Mike, on your points, I mean, I get it, but I would say a couple of things. One, it is specific individuals, but that's just now. There'll be other specific individuals. I mean, I know there's an effort going on, but there'll be other specific individuals who do the same thing. And if you allow it, if you don't do something about it, it invites more of it. And then on, on the question of time and money, I don't think this needs to be expensive or very time consuming. I think we're big. It's basically, we're talking about is a couple of potentially conforming pieces of legislation that are more or less self-enforcing. I mean, the EPA program basically means, you know, an officer can look at a motorcycle. And if the label on the muffler and the label on the chassis don't match, they're not in compliance and there's a fine. That's pretty simple. And on the Wilkes-Barre thing is Scott was just talking about. They do have a provision in there that talks about the unnecessary or excessive or unnatural acceleration, deceleration, or racing of motors and vehicles where they're in motion at rest or at rest within the town of the time, the limits of the township. That's pretty clear and simple and it's it's enumerated as a prohibited noise. We don't have anything like that. So I think there's some things we could learn from that and I think it would be good to, you know, I don't think we should sort of rush off and and adopt a whole, whole cloth here, but I don't think it would be a bad idea to talk to the people in Wilkes-Barre and ask them if this has helped them, if this has been effective in some way.
So there's There's, there's no, there's no harm in that. And I, I guess I was, when I was talking about the cost, I saw in, in an email or somewhere that there was talk of investing thousands of dollars in a, in a system to measure the noise and then, but then the requirements for doing that were so specific that I don't know that we have any place in the borough that would conform.
Yeah, no, I said that before.
But but the, but I guess part of what my, what I'm, where I'm coming from too is, as, as the chief said, we have, we have an ordinance now that isn't being enforced because they're not getting complaints to enforce. So you're right, there will be, you know, I say always, but there, from time to time, there will be individuals who cause a problem, but in order for anything to be enforced, changing our ordinance won't matter if nobody calls in to complain and give the officers an opportunity to enforce it. So that's, that's, I guess, what part of what, where I'm coming from with it.
Well, and that's, that's a good point. And I think for those of us who are hearing it, I guess we need to do a better job of that. I mean, it's a small borough and it's hard for me to understand how some people aren't hearing this. It's an enormous noise. And on weekends, it goes on for hours. So you know, we can, I can be more diligent about that sort of thing and maybe we need to you know, people don't like to complain generally. And I think people don't necessarily think that there's a remedy for this and they just have to live with it. And in fact, when you look at our noise ordinance, you sort of do, because it doesn't give you much to really work with in terms of shutting this down where the Wilkes-Barre one does. So I think there are a combination of factors here, but certainly you know, if what's necessary are complaints, I think we can I can assure you, I will do that. And others may as well. So I think this is something that we could address fairly simply. I'm not looking to make more work for anybody, but I think adopting some of these provisions and looking into their validity in our borough would not be a bad idea. And as I said, my concern is trying to, you know, is economic development here. I think the the kind of folks that we want to come here are not going to be happy to live in a town where motorcycles are racing regularly. So.
Alright, well, I mean, I, I think that this just is going to be an ongoing conversation for a while. You know, we're, we need to parse through the, through the ordinance and see maybe what, you know, what can we do to strengthen it that's not going to be, you know, that's not going to be using decibel meters and everything else, that kind of stuff. using decibel meters and everything else uh that kind of stuff. And you know, I think that we need to bounce those ideas off the chief. And uh we'll go from there and you know, like like the mayor said, we're going to be inside for the next four or five months. So you know, hopefully it won't be won't be too bad, but let's uh let's just continue the conversation. Maybe there just needs to be some some work uh outside between us council members and where we can um you know, work on developing what what we want that ordinance to look like. So.
Yeah.
The only point I want to make is solicitor is that uh I haven't actually been asked to do anything yet about this, but I really think it's important that we have it. Whatever the provisions are that we adopt, that the police be very comfortable with enforcing it. And and if there are issues at the magistrate level, take me to one of those test cases to make sure that we get uh we get it through. I don't think I've ever had to go with you to um a hearing with uh with Vivian, but I've had good success on behalf of townships in which they send me to do all the the uh litigation work uh for the townships and we have quite a few things from trying to clean up properties to we've even had no noise ordinance issues. Um and again, it's specific to your to your uh to your ordinance. So getting provisions in the ordinance, the noise ordinance, which are easy to understand and um for the officers to enforce. Um I think that's the only way it's going to work. So we we could spend a lot of money, but if the officers have no confidence in getting the result they want from the magistrate level or from um actually writing them up and being able to explain to somebody else what the violation is about. Those are things we need to craft if indeed that's the direction you want to go.
Absolutely. I agree with you. It'd be crazy to spend money on that stuff. Um most of those cases get thrown out anyway. As far as the magistrate is concerned, I mean, I can't you can't second guess what a magistrate is going to do before they do it. You just have to write your law the way you think it makes sense for you and then.
No, Vivian Vivian is pretty consistent. She says, you show me the ordinance, you show me the provisions. You tell me there's been a violation and you prove um your case and and she'll she'll enforce it. So I've not had any difficulty with her being consistent. I know what she looks for. I know what kind of written violations she expects to see. Uh and usually the most famous noise case we've had so far is the dueling roosters up in Cook Township. And boy, we had to we had to record them and and uh and uh it was it was a it was a trial, but it was important to the residents up there because they claimed those roosters were going twenty-four seven. And uh they couldn't get rest or sleep and uh eventually the roosters either died or the person moved out. But anyway, the point is it did resolve itself, but you have to you have to have an ordinance that you can uh explain to the magistrate and that officers are uh comfortable bringing the case.
I agree. I agree. And I think these two provisions help in that regard. They're very they're much clearer and easier. They're sort of self executing. The EPA one is.
Well, I need to I need to speak to uh probably uh Fred and the and uh Chief Cozier about some issues anyway. So I'll make a list of and include that in it and see what we come up with.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, uh chief?
Just one more comment on the noise and get moving on. Um the difference with noise and and versus uh speed or something like that, speed, there's a there's a measurable number. And with noise, when we're talking about an unnatural acceleration, that's that's opinion. It's not. It's not a measurable thing and that's where we'll have trouble getting that through court.
And and that's why I want to talk to the Wilkes-Barre people because they've got it in their um ordinance. And the question is, are they enforcing it and how are they enforcing it? Is it actually working? I mean, I I think your point is a very good one. I look at it and I think, well, how are they doing this? But it's in there. They've been doing it for a year. You know, maybe they've decided this one doesn't this part of it doesn't work, but we ought to find that out.
All right. And chief, you're gonna stick around for the curfew discussion?
Yeah.
Anything else for chief? All right, no fire, chief. Uh Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh these figures are for the month of uh September. Uh traffic fines eighteen hundred and forty dollars and twelve cents, non-traffic ninety-five seventy-eight. Prohibited parking thirty. Clerk of courts, one ninety-four eighty-five. Total fines and revenue for the month, twenty-one sixty seventy-five. The uh police department checking account balance, seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents. K nine account one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Usable balance on the department's debit card, two eighty-one forty-three and two hundred and twenty-one dollars in the auxiliary police account account. Just and and just to reinforce what the the chief had indicated about the use of the license plate reader. They are uncover with through the use of that and making the stops for expired registration. They are discovering secondary violations that actually are are of greater concern than someone driving their car without a current registration. And that is uh in a lot of those instances, those people are driving without insurance. Just one of the reasons their car isn't registered to begin with. Now, if you've ever been unfortunate enough to be in an accident where your vehicle was hit by someone with no insurance, then you will realize that 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 is not uh a violation to just shrug your shoulders that. So uh the license plate reader is helping us uncover other more serious violations. That ends my report.
Anything else for the mayor?
Just one com- just one comment on that. People think that because uh it's mandatory that you have insurance on your car because of of the stickers being removed from the license plate. Uh it's a lot easier to get away with it without without a reader like our police force ads. And so I warn people all the time, you need to have excellent underinsured coverage and and uninsured coverage on your own auto policy because it's cheap, um meaning it's inexpensive to have. But you'd be surprised how many drivers are out there either without licenses or without insurance on their car. And you are stuck if you've got a really bad accident that hurts members of your family, especially breadwinners. So I I always tell people, check your policy and make sure you've got excellent coverage uh for uninsured, underinsured, because uh many people are out there driving through the community without proper insurance.
All right, um nothing from L E M C. Uh solicitors report. All right, Mr. Knight.
Uh number one, I must say that when I sat down to write the amendment, I was not comfortable with what in information I had. So um my proposal is to sit down with uh with Fred and the chief and make sure I've got it all right. Because there's some provisions I I thought were already covered in the ordinances we passed earlier this year. I want to just make sure I get it right. So um as I said, I have to sit down with the chief anyway. And so I'll make one trip and see both Fred and the chief hopefully on the same day. I've had two hearings canceled Thursday morning, Friday morning, or either those days days, chief, when you have available Thursday or Friday morning?
Thursday morning wouldn't be the best because well, depending on what we do with trick or treat, that's going to be a long day. Friday would be okay.
Okay, then I'll I'll stop by Friday and uh are we have are we planning to have a work session next week?
I would see I I don't unless somebody says otherwise, I don't see why we wouldn't.
Well, then I'll have I'll have it ready for the work session then for you to look at.
Okay. All right, next one is uh ordinance twenty twenty oh eight. Uh it's the curfew.
Uh that ordinance is ready um to be advertised if you looked at it and you're comfortable with it.
Any questions about it?
This would raise the uh curfew uh age to um under eighteen from I guess it's under seventeen now.
It's fifteen and under right now.
Fifteen and under.
Fifteen and under.
Have you found these uh this curfew um ordinance to be helpful, chief?
Uh the one we have, no, because the majority of times that people end up being sixteen or seventeen.
So it's uh so so it is a problem for older adolescents, I guess.
Yes.
Does I mean, does most does a lot of the uh problems that are created happen after curfew time?
Yes, um we've actually been having a fair bit of trouble with that lately. Um again, specific individuals, um same group of individuals related to the motorcycles and uh we can't enforce it if they're sixteen and seventeen. I think we we did have one recently that was that was fifteen and that's the first one in in quite a while that um we were we were able to enforce because of the age limitations.
I I'm assuming there's exemptions for, you know, like coming home from work, that kind of stuff.
Yes, that's all in there.
I don't have it in front of me for some reason. Um okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
Uh the provision uh in section one says um unless the employment of such job requires him to be upon public street, highway or property at such time, provided any of these sections will not apply when the person or persons under the age of eighteen shall be unnecessarily loitering in or upon it any public street, alley, highway or property. So if you have someone coming out from work and they've been spending three hours coming home from work in the borough, that would not be acceptable.
All right. So uh is everybody satisfied with this?
Yes.
We're
Yes.
We're good to go ahead and I guess we're ready to advertise. Is that correct?
Yep. Advertise for adoption at the next meeting.
So need a motion.
I make a motion that we advertise for adoption of the um curfew ordinance.
All right, need a second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved, cited. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, anything else, Mr. McKnight?
Not right now.
All right, uh Mr. Potzer?
I don't have anything.
What? You don't have anything?
Wow, nope, we covered it under finance.
Very good. All right, Mr. Crouch, uh cog.
Um nothing new to report since the last meeting.
Okay, Mr. Darius, public safety? I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions for for Mr. Crouch? All right, Mr. Darius, public safety? You're muted. You're muted.
You're still muted, bud.
I'm trying to.
Bob, unmute your mic there. You're you're not uh we can't hear you talking.
There you go.
Nothing new to report since last meeting.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Darius? All right, very good. Economic development, Mr. Erickson?
Uh yeah, just a couple of things. Um so the EDA had its first two-hour strategy session last week. And um I I sent to everyone or Fred sent it, we were on my behalf, the um output of the meeting. Um the strategic planning session notes, um I'm not going to go through them all. I mean, you can read them. You can see it was a pretty expansive conversation. And um you know, we talked about the things that you see there, why the organization exists, uh who it serves, the stakeholders. We talked about strengths and weaknesses, uh things we need to focus on. At the November meeting, we'll follow up on these. Um I think in the short term, uh I would say, well, overall, I would say it was a good meeting. Everybody was engaged, all five of the um EDA members, including the new member Vince Malat, uh who attended this meeting. Were very engaged, had a lot of ideas, a lot of energy. I think some of the takeaways were um you know, the short-term top line takeaways would be uh the um EDA feels like it needs to uh get some quick education on economic development. Uh these are all folks that are either business people or um other bankers, but and they're all sort of um outstanding in their field, but economic development is a very special kind of beast. Uh and there was a feeling that we need they needed to know more to be able to do this effectively. So that's going to be one of the short-term things that get focused on is how do we get some training for these folks so they don't understand the field that they're playing on? Another thing is going to be stable funding. Uh it's clear that we need to be looking at how we stabilize uh and create an independent source of funding for the EDA, which is currently entirely funded by the uh borough. They felt it was going to be very important to identify some short-term projects uh that would demonstrate that uh they can get some things done that would also keep the EDA members interested uh because they could see some progress. Uh so we'll be looking for some quick hits, some things that we can do in the short term to demonstrate the value. Uh and sort of corollary to that is building public support. Uh there was a strong sense that we need to get the public behind this and understanding what we're what they're doing uh so that they have the support of the community for the kinds of projects that they think are going to be necessary moving forward. Um that's pretty much it. Uh on that, I'll just run through a couple of things if you have any questions at the end. We had a uh prospect hosting committee meeting on the eighth. Um went through a strategy discussion based on our previous meeting that we had with Katic with uh Valerie Copenhaber and with Jamie Keener, who's the president there. Uh some decisions were made about, you know, moving forward and mounting our um efforts there. Uh we decided that we needed to do a community survey. What people want for new businesses in the borough and we're going to try to approach that in a couple of different ways through social media, but also through some uh more formal um survey uh instruments that are available to us through the Pennsylvania Downtown Center uh for free, um which is a benefit of our membership. We are kind of develop uh a um excuse me, a a business property availability um map, basically. Uh and Jason Malat, who's on the committee and is taking over his chair there has taken his hands doing a quick one, but the idea is to identify all the properties in uh Newville that might be available for businesses, uh the kinds of businesses that landlords would be would be comfortable with that being there and then uh defining um and getting and then putting together sort of a listing of those businesses that we could then put on or those uh locations that we could then put on the website, uh which we're in the process now of developing. We also they talked about um defining and addressing barriers to success. And one of the big barriers that was voiced was not knowing how to get started. So one of the things that uh Andrea, who's uh the chair of the uh EDA, but also on the prospect hosting committee, said is that we need to, she's going to sit with Fred and have a conversation about what it takes to get a business started here and we will we'll put together some sort of reference uh for people so that they know from A to Z what it takes to get a business started. Uh we also talked about uh creating ambassadors, uh folks who would um reach out to businesses uh that we identified. Uh and try to make a sort of a concierge service where we answer all their questions, we help them with all the applications. We make this as seamless a process as possible. And then we talked about the website and we have a proposal for a a website that we laid in front of the um uh the EDA. Um they asked for some additional information and we're doing that right now, but um Tessa Blaser, uh I think of it, Blaser is uh has put that together for us. It's let's think of it, Blaser is, has put that together for us. It's a really good and I think very valuable proposal, and hopefully we'll get that approved soon. And then finally, on the advisory committee to the, to the EDA. The last time we talked, we were at the point where we were going to start contacting folks and on the list to see if we can get them involved. We decided that the best way to do that would be to get the actual EDA members to do some of that outreach because they're people of consequence in the community and they will convey when they are talking to somebody that this is an important job. We have senior people talking to you and we highly regard you as a potential participant in this. So Andrea is, you know, is working now through dividing the names up and calls will be made or our emails or whatever each EDA member decides to do to try to attract members. So that's kind of it for now. Any questions or comments on any of that?
I do. Um, you know, you talked, Jack, about these people on the, on the EDA wanting more training. You have one of the most valuable persons on that that could do wonderful training and give a lot of guidance and answer any questions these people have, and that's Chris Galata. I mean, he, you know, to go outside that it's an, I don't think is a good idea because he's, he has it all. He has all the strengths. He's done this. He knows. So, you know, I know it, it cost us to have him. So the money that we're spending to have him may be well utilized to train these people. And what kind of short term projects are you looking at? You know, this committee has been meeting for months now and it doesn't appear like it's going anywhere. It's just kind of, you're having meetings and you're talking about the same, seems like you're talking about the same thing. So, you know, I would think that by now you should have something lined up.
Yeah, well, on the first point, I think your thinking is exactly right. I think Chris would be somebody who, who could do that for us. And, you know, I talked to Andrea a bit about it, and I think, you know, we, we have to have this, the meeting was just last week, so we have to kind of talk with others, Fred and others about this. But yeah, Chris would be a perfect person to do that kind of thing. And in terms of your second point, we have had three meetings now. And, you know, the first couple of meetings were people sort of talking about in a general sense of, you know, how we're going to get this started, how we're going to get it mounted. The strategy session was really set up to be kind of the kickoff point, but a number of things have been identified. There are a number of infrastructure projects that we've talked about a number of times that we're hoping that we can get started. And we've talked about trying to, you know, take over a, some properties that we could turn into parks. There've been a number of very specific proposals that we're working with, but all these things take time to come to fruition and they all require money. So, you know, we're in the process of trying to, the EDA is in the process of trying to find sources of funds. Applications have been put in, some have been denied. Others are still in the, in the processing stage. So that's about where we are. This is a long term process. You know, we're not going to see overnight results here. It's going to take time and effort, money. And those are all things that, you know, we're in the process of marshaling.
Do you have any idea how much money you have spent so far?
Well, the money we have spent so far has largely been on our staff. The engineer, our solicitor and Chris. I don't have the numbers in hand.
Just curious. That's okay.
But I, I don't know, I would say we probably are somewhere in the $5,000 range, maybe a little over that. Fred's eyebrows are going up. What do you tell, what do you think, Fred?
Well, initially we had that allocation of $10,000 from the borough, which has been expended. And at the last finance meeting, we had a request for an additional 10,000, which finance committee felt maybe $5,000 would be more appropriate. But, you know, your actual expenditures are probably somewhere between 12 and $13,000 with, you know, bills coming in every month. Now Chris Galata is billing us every two months, trying to help out, but still the bill is a bill and whether it's every month or every two months. It's expensive. On the average, the authority, I think, if you looked at Chris and Tim would be somewhere around $1,500 a month that the borough is, that the expenses were incurred.
Each or or together, Fred?
All three, you know.
Okay.
Now, now next month's bill is going to be high because of the strategy session. Mr. Galata had travel time. Excuse me. He had actually travel time, two hours up, two hours back, then it's time in the meeting. It's time to prepare the report. So you're going to have a rather large bill just for that one session.
Okay.
Any, any discussions, Jack, about an effort to obtain nonprofit status, which, which would allow the EDA to apply for grants and monies they, they wouldn't normally be able to.
They authorized, they authorized going with a short form, so we get that done quicker. The short form recognition application. So that's been authorized and we'll see if we can get that in in the next week or two.
To echo a little bit of what Jody said, I, I have kind of had a little bit of the same feeling that there's been a, a lot of talk, but not, not a whole lot of action. And even just with what you said about she, in response to her with Chris Calata, he said you need to, need to talk about that with other people with, it would seem, it would seem to me that that would have been an obvious item that would have been discussed as part of the meeting and they could have made a decision right there as part of that to, to, to get, utilize him for training. Especially if he was there and you could have, have inquired from him right there what the costs and, and possibility of that would be. But, and, and you, I was, would also add that you were talking about getting, you know, support from the community. I think one, one thing that's going to be very important to doing that is that the people in the community feel like there is something happening besides meetings. Because that's, they, people will get on, onboard and back your, what your, what your goals are if they see progress. But if, if all they're seeing and reading about is, is another committee, another meeting, whatever, they, they just feel like it's more government business as usual with, with not much happening.
Right, which is why we, you know, they recognize the need to identify some projects that have some early wins on and to and to move forward with trying to get, build support, but these things take time. I mean, I know from the outside, maybe it looks like we should be moving faster. But it takes time to build this, this kind of thing. You know, Chris is the staff director. I think he's moving at a very good pace as fast as he can move. But this is a new project and it's going to take some time to get off the ground.
Sure, understood. I did have a question. You're talking about the infrastructure projects and, and obtaining properties to convert them into parks. I guess that was a little different, the kind of projects than what I envisioned an economic development authority involving in. Because parks, while they may increase the, the attractiveness of a community to, to a point, we, we already have one very nice community park. We've got some other areas, nice areas around the town. So I'm not sure that additional parks will do a whole lot to attract more business to the town, which is, which is what our goal was with creating the, the authority. So I guess, you know, follow, to, to follow up Jody's question, what, what are some things that were, are short term goals or projects to actually work on getting business in the town? Not just, because creating infrastructure, improving infrastructure is nice, but if we don't get business in town, then that, then that's just doesn't help, doesn't, you know, doesn't achieve our goal. So are, are we putting the cart before the horse? Should, should we focus on getting business and then work on the infrastructure? Or, so those are just some of the things rolling in my mind.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, Mike. I mean, I think as far as getting small businesses in town, you have to sort of have something to offer small businesses. So that's why we have the project, the prospect hosting committee to start reaching out to people, but to reach out, you didn't have to know who you want to reach out to. And that's why we're going through the process and trying to identify what people want to see in town as, as, as businesses. And in terms of like the park, for instance, there are targets of opportunity, things that present themselves, which if you were, you know, approaching this, if you had complete control over all the variables, you would say, well, you know, a park isn't necessarily what we need right now. But a park is a possibility, given the availability of a particular property that can't be used for much of anything else, because it's pretty well gutted. And there may be grant money that can help support that, and that would help to create an ambiance in town. It, it creates a something where people come in, have a business, who want to look at a town and they see this and they say, this is nice. So it's, it's lots of little pieces, but I mean, ramping this up just takes some time. The prospect hosting committee, as I said, is, we're doing some surveys now. We'll get the results of the surveys and that will give us something to to focus on in terms of what people want to see. The advisory committee, you know, is now in the process of being, we're being put together. And hopefully those people will help be the ambassadors that we need to the public. And, I mean, that's basically what I can tell you at this point. I hear the desire for there to be some urgency and I can assure you that everybody's working with urgency, but it takes time for things to happen. And, but those are good comments.
Who are the surveys going out to, Jack?
Well, there's two kinds of surveys. One is going to be a social networking survey. There are apparently two Newville based websites, Facebook websites in town. One brought in by the movement people and another run by somebody else whose name eludes me. But together they have about 4,000 people that participate in it. So we're going to do a quick and dirty, you know, what would you like to see in Newville kind of thing on social media? And then the other one will be with the, through the Pennsylvania Downtown Center. They have a business survey that we can use. And, and then, and they will give us the, this, this sort of structure for it and then we can use it in whatever way we want to.
Well, I don't mean to, to sound smart here, but the two social media ones that you're talking about in town here, I don't know what kind of results you're going to get because most of the people that make a lot of comments on those few sites don't make good comments. You know, they, they tend to belittle any major thing that the borough tries to do. So, you know, I just want you to be aware of that.
I was going to say, I was going to comment on that as well. You said quick and dirty. If you're using, putting on those, it will be quick and dirty. Because Mike Hippenstiel did a survey of his own earlier this year and it was, it got pretty ugly.
It did, it did.
I'm not sure that that approach is one you may want to, may want to pursue at, to be honest with you.
What kind of survey was it?
What you would like to see come into Newville. What kind of businesses you would like to see come into Newville. Actually, the things that we're talking about here. Um, yeah.
What kind of, what, what did they get?
Well, you know, they got like fast foods, they got things about drinking, which is fine, um, but nothing, and then you had all these people that were making smart little pun comments. I think that you should make a trip to see Mike Hippenstiel and Mike is a very informative person. You know, he does, you know, due diligence as far as trying to get facts. And he may be able to give you a little insight on his survey that he did.
Okay. Yeah, well.
I have a question or comment. Why don't we support the existing businesses? They need support right now.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's part of the plan.
The diner is closed. What can we do to help?
We have done some things to help the diner. We have helped them, steered them to some grants that it's allowing them to continue in operation. And as far as the social media stuff is concerned, you know, that's social media. It's, it is, it's the devil, I think, but you learn a lot from people from what they tell you on social media. I mean, some, I imagine we'll get the usual kind of direct you get on social media, but you'll get some serious stuff too.
The, the other thing, Jack, is, you know, I think we, you can still do a survey and push it out through social media and, and use a, a web based survey that would collect the information that doesn't need to have the comments back and forth. You know, that, that often isn't helpful, but it would collect, you know, people's ideas, which is what I think you're trying to get at is, you know, what, what's people's ideas and that kind of stuff.
Right. Yeah, that's what we're trying to do. And, you know, we, we'll try to structure it. We may get some comments that are off the mark or off color or whatever, but it, it is the way people respond these days to to public inquiry, you know, I mean.
Why don't we mention that we're going to help the small businesses now in the social media? I mean, those are positive things we're doing. We helped the diner, why, why don't we mention it? We've done it.
Well, yeah, I think we need a web presence to do that. And that's what we're trying to do is to get a website up that can talk about what the EDA is doing or going to do. At the last meeting, we had a conversation about that. We have a proposal. There was a request for additional information. We now have that additional information. It'll be considered and fed back into the, you know, next meeting. And I'm hoping at that point, you know, we can move forward with it.
The mayor mentioned nonprofit. Why don't we do something about that?
About what?
Nonprofit status.
Yeah, we're working on that.
We are working on that.
Yeah.
Well, well, that's progress. We have the idea we're working on. People should know that we're doing things. We're not just talking.
Right. And that's why we need to get the website up and moving so that we can get information out, push out our thoughts, push out our activities. And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
This is not a huge bureaucracy. It's a small town. If people know that we're doing things and they see we're doing things, they would be happier. They'll have a more positive attitude toward us.
Uh, yes, exactly. That's been, you know, one of the many, main ideas behind the whole thing about getting an advisory committee and and to develop public support, getting a website to develop public support. That's all being worked on.
Just one, one observation, that is that rarely have you seen EDAs formulated during a pandemic. And there was a steering committee that worked very hard in the early days, March and April, to reach out to businesses. And it's generally thought that they made it a lot of businesses with grants and loans that were available. And we, they let people know that the borough cared. And that was an important, that's an important win that may have been forgotten, but those early days when people were more uncertain than they can imagine, than you can imagine. The borough did reach out to them and that happened to be the exact time that the EDA was being formed.
That's right. Scott and Fred and myself made a bunch, made calls to all the businesses in town to ask them what they needed and what they were That's right. Scott and Fred and myself made a bunch, made calls to all the businesses in town to ask them what they needed and what they were doing. And we were able to help some of them. And others of them, I think, as as Marcus just said, remember that we've been trying to do that, but you can't help them. We don't have money, right? So we've been, and Fred has been primarily, you know, pulling the oar on this. Trying to find money, grant money to support some of these efforts. And that's what we're going to have to do until the EDA can become self sustaining, because there's not a lot of money hanging around right now to be found. And you know, we're trying to, we're doing what we can to identify it. But right now, a lot of what we're doing is building infrastructure within the EDA so that we can get public support, that we can find grant money, that we have projects that we can put in place when we have the money. I mean, all these things are happening at once. But these things take time. And as Marcus says, it is, it's a tough time to find money.
Just one last thing before, you know, before we move on from it, you know, I know, I know Mr. Galata has put in a lot of time and energy behind the scenes that we probably don't realize that he's, he's done. We have the convenience store, you know, phone calls made on, on that end. That's probably going to be opening up within the next couple of weeks. He's done a lot of work with the folks with the ribbon mill. You know, there, there's just a lot of behind the scenes and I would count those as little wins. You can't say a whole lot about the ribbon mill yet, but you know, the convenience store opening back up. I know there's a there's also discussions of a small town home development possibly coming in. So, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of things that maybe we just haven't talked about yet and just because we really can't talk about them yet. But, you know, he, things are moving and they're moving in the right direction.
I applaud the outreach effort because I think that's, that's tremendous. How, I would suggest that we make, make it to include the surrounding areas. Not just the borough, because in order for economic activity to be profitable here in the borough, it's going to have to attract a lot of business from around the area, not just the people within the borough. And that's, I guess that's part of what we, what we, you know, we've talked about some other times is making, figuring out how, how to develop businesses here that are, make Newville an attraction, you know, to draw people in from, from around from outside the borough, because when that happens, they typically will spend money at other enterprises as well.
Yeah, exactly. There's a multiplier effect. That's, that's why we're doing the things that we're doing at the trailhead, try to make that a more attractive place and to bring more people in the trail is a great resource for us. We need to try to exploit it as much as we can. We're working with the rail trail folks on that. And, you know, we, we're I think, you know, we're, we're moving at the pace at which we can move, given the resources that we have to, to work with at this point. And hopefully that will start to accelerate as, as things come together. But it's, it's a tough process bringing together a lot of people in, you know, a prospect handling committee, a an advisory committee, getting an EDA members onboard and developing a common vision and a common strategy for moving forward. You know, that'll take some time. Yeah, to your comment specifically, Mike, we are looking at a much broader area. I mean, the, the opportunity data that we're looking at, we, we've gotten some data from the Pennsylvania downtown center about retail opportunity data. And we're looking at, you know, how much people spend within a, say a five mile driving distance of Newville on specific kinds of things, you know, furniture, clothing, restaurants. And that's kind of the catchment area we're working with. And that's, so, so what we're looking at is what, you know, what people in a much broader area might be interested in and seeing what, which of those things might work here. You know, for instance, there's a big gap between how much furniture people buy in the area and how much we sell, which is virtually nothing. But you know, we're, we're probably not a good location for a business to set up a brick and mortar operation for selling furniture. You know, that's done online these days. It's done by big places like Wolf's or so you have to sort of sort out which businesses actually would make it in a place like that. And that's part of what we're trying to find out with these surveys is what would people frequent? You know, what do they think is missing? And then we can try to supply those things.
Well, thank you for what you're doing.
I'd just like to close with this comment. Cumberland County was very fortunate to recently hire Mary Kona to serve as the head of the redevelopment authority. Once Mary gets her feet on the ground, you're going to see not just in Newville, but throughout Cumberland County, a focus on small town downtown development like you've never seen before. Because that's Mary's area of expertise. She shines there. We're lucky to have her. So the best is yet to come. And I have a lot of faith in Mary, tremendous faith, based upon her work here many years ago. And the best is yet to come. Don't give up the ship. She'll be a tremendous asset for Cumberland County.
Right. And I would also say if, I mean, there's obviously a real interest in this on the part of the members. If you want to sit in on the EDA meetings, you're welcome to do it. And participate. And there's no reason you can't do that. Might be a good idea so you can see what's happening and you know, bring your ideas to the table and that would be great.
Thanks, Jack.
Jack, how far are we in developing the website?
We've got a good plan worked out. It's ready to be executed. And I was just asked to go back and see if there were, you know, other less costly options. I think we've done that. I think we've got a pretty good plan. We're just going to bring that back and I think we'll push that through. So my guess is that by our November meeting, we'll have it ready to go.
So then we could publicize not only what's going on in the borough, but for example, a subway shop was opened up close to Sayers Market, you know, that's I know people know it is, but I mean, we're blowing our horn.
Yeah.
Things are changing.
That's what you need a website for. That's what the social media aspect of this is, is, you know, people, you have to make success by fake it till you make it, you know, you have to start talking about what you're doing. And over time, that builds some momentum. And you, you know, you grow by telling people why it's good for them to be involved here. Why they, we've got the things here that they want.
All right. Anything else for Jack? Mr. Sinkovich.
I have nothing.
Anything, Fred? Okay, Mrs. Deal.
Okay, currently we are having our resale. You can go to Newville's borough's website to place your orders. We're hoping that we sell at least fifty. Their twenty or twenty-two dollars proceeds from that resale is going to be divided between Neighbors and Christ and the Big Spring area food bank, which are two really good causes for our borough. You know, I would hope that we would be able to, the orders must be in by November the sixth. And distribution is going to be on the, I think it's the twenty-seventh. It's a Saturday after Thanksgiving, which is also the first day of deer season for those hunters out there. And it's going to be, they're going to be distributed at the Borough Maintenance Building by the sewer plant. The other thing that I want to talk a little bit about and hopefully I'll have the support of the, the borough. The past years, Sharon and Dr. Sholley have always done a coat drive. And it's always been done at the food bank. But this year with passing of, of Dr. Sholley, Sharon is not going to do it. But there is a need out there for this coat drive. And with the help of the borough, I'd like to take on having a coat drive. And I don't have all the specifics on it, but you know, if I can get Borough Council's approval that, you know, we go ahead and do that coat drive. I would like to do it. They're, they're usually handed it out at the food bank in December. But like I said, since the food bank, everything is drive through there. They don't want to add that extra item on their plate at the, at the food bank. But I think that with that, maybe even with the operation of the school, that they could maybe give us, you know, people that may be in need of coats, that we can, you know, get specific sizes, that type of thing. But I would like to be able to do that through quality of life.
I like it.
And then the other thing I think we need to talk about, because it's been all over social media today about the impending weather for Thursday night and if we're going to do Halloween in the borough on Thursday night.
Well, I don't feel that we have much of a choice. We, the chief, it, it took him longer than normal to get enough people together for traffic control. Problem we face now is Saturday is the District Three Cross Country Championships at Big Spring. There will be hundreds of runners there. A lot of the people who are helping us with trick or treat Thursday night will be there on Saturday. And we will have next to no traffic control if we move it to Saturday. We decided a couple of meetings ago, we needed to have. Moving it to Saturday and we're going, going to be very shorthanded.
Right. That's fine. And I don't have a problem with that. I just thought we needed to address it here so that it's public record that it was discussed and the reasons that we're keeping it on Thursday.
Yeah, I agree. But it, it, for the borough, it's a public safety issue and we will not be able to if not for that issue, if all these guys were available Saturday, I'd have no problem changing it, but it, but they're not. And so it, so it becomes a public safety issue.
Right, right, right.
Can I interject there a little bit?
Yes, Todd, please.
I, I spoke to our auxiliary police yesterday, I believe. And I can tell you that I'm probably not going to have any auxiliary police if it rains.
Probably not going to have any trick or treaters if it rains either. I mean, if it rains, like it's going to, they're talking about it, nobody's going to go out, right?
That wasn't the case last year. I had water running over the top of my boots. And there were trick or treaters.
Nineteen, we have a new normal. Things are not, are not going to be the same for a while. As much as I love trick or treating, kids love it, you know, just, we have to realize, you know, some things aren't going to be the way they used to be.
And the other thing I guess too is do we have to approve Jeff Bowers thing that he must just move from Thursday night to Saturday night? You know, the thing in the alley?
I would say yes, because we approved for it to be on Thursday, right?
Right.
Well, he's already advertising on Facebook that it's been approved.
But it hasn't, has it?
It was approved for Thursday night.
Yeah.
He called me today and he said he was going to change it to four to seven. He's put a certificate of insurance up. I mean, the only thing we're doing is closing the street and the parking lot. There's nothing else in the borough that it affects.
Okay.
Is he going to hold it with the rain and stuff?
No, he's going to move it till Saturday.
Oh, okay.
It's going to happen Saturday afternoon from four to seven.
Back, back to the Halloween, if, if our concern with allowing trick or treating was the traffic control and now the chief is saying we're not going to have traffic control. How does that affect?
We will have some, but it will be light.
We've already let people know it's, it's happening. So it's probably too late to change, to change anything now.
We could limit it to a certain area.
Chief, will you know on Thursday, how many you'll have that we could advertise where we will have, where we'll have traffic control at?
I can double check with the, the four auxiliary police that I had coming in just to make sure that they're not going to attend. If it rains. We are going to have, borough guys are, are going to help. And I have all the officers on duty. It would just be light if the auxiliary policemen don't come in lighter than I would want it, but we would still have traffic control.
I'm just saying, if we advertise where, where those folks will be, that should help families make a decision where they'll, where they'll trick or treat that night.
Yeah. I can do that.
By, by limiting the area, we also reduce our liability. Right? I don't know. Seems like.
So with Jeff Bowers saying, do we need to, do you need a motion to approve the change of date or do we just say that we've got, given blanket approval?
I, I feel like we need to approve the, the change in date because I, I think the motion was for Thursday and so.
I think you want to consider bringing another officer or so in for that evening. Also, because there's, there's only one officer on duty for Saturday evening.
Because, because normally it was on trick or treat night. So we had all the auxiliary police and all the police officers here, which sort of was like a built in safety net for Jeff's event. And now it's going to be a standalone event.
Are you able to put another officer on, Todd, for Saturday evening?
It's just going to be overtime. I have one coming in on overtime on, on Thursday evening. That would be the only thing. It would be time and a half. I don't think I'd have any trouble getting somebody.
Okay.
All right. Well, do we have a motion? Mr. Mayor, was, are you waving that?
No, I was waving. I want to buy a new camera. I will be willing to suit up again. Oh, you all laughing? You think I'm kidding?
No, I don't, Randy.
I know you're not kidding.
I know you don't need the overtime to afford it.
You can always advertise where Mary's going to be.
Right.
All right. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion. But I've been trying to make the motion.
Michael moved it and seconded any other discussion.
Well, my motion was also going to be that we authorize bringing in an additional officer.
Yeah, that's, that, okay. So it's change of date and then also the extra officer that night. All right. Very good. And that, you're good with that, Ed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Anything else, Joey?
No, but do I need a motion or anything for, to do the coat drive?
I, I mean, if you want, if you want, if you want one, we'll do it. Doesn't cost the borough any money.
No, it's not going to cost the borough anything, just, you know, but I just wanted on record that.
How about, how about? How about, how about um, you bring the specifics? Can you bring the specifics to the work session?
Yep, I'll do my best to have it ready for you by then. Sure.
Yeah, just do that and then we can.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
That's a good call.
All right. Administration. Mr. Crouch.
All right, well, uh, we've had the budget to look over and I recommend that we uh, adopt, uh, tentatively adopt the uh, general fund, highway aid, street lighting, fire tax and rental fund budget and uh, and approve the advertising of the budgets. So that would be the first item.
That sounds like a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Suppose say no. Wish any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next one.
And then the, we discussed at the last meeting a little bit about the possibility of uh, having a borough employee uh, uh, for code enforcement again. And I think Fred had sent a uh, some information out, a proposal for that. I guess I'd be asked for any discussion on that, any questions? Um, I have spoken to one of the individuals who applied for the secretary position and she is interested. Uh, had a few questions which and I have not had an opportunity to sit down with Fred and go over those. But um, we do have at least one individual who is interested already, so.
Everybody got that job description correct? Any other discussion on that? I'm I'm assuming that this switch would take place January one. All right. Do you need anything else, Michael, on that end?
Um, no, uh, other than I guess we, the council would probably need to uh, make a decision, make a vote on making that uh, position. Or enacting that position. So I would move if if that we um, create that position for the borough employee as a code enforcement officer again and then advertise for uh, applicants.
Okay, so Michael has moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded and Michael, can we just add to that that it would be effective January one?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any any other discussion?
Do we also need to include then that uh, notifying uh, the other folks that their their contract ends on January first?
Uh, yes, just for codes enforcement, correct?
Correct.
They would still do the inspections and and. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Suppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, anything else, Michael?
I think that's all I have at this time.
Anything for Mike? All right, very good. Uh, don't see any citizens' comments on YouTube. None there. Fred, did you have any? What was that, Fred?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Uh, there's a correspondence in your packet. Anything in addition to that, Fred?
No, uh, Mr. Hoover did stop in today at a meeting with me. Uh, he would like to help on the committee. Bill Barnhart, I think, would also like to be on for the authority, so. If you would consider adding those two people.
I I don't, do we have to add them or is it just, I I was assuming they would just, the authority would add their people?
Well, the the building committee was voted on and appointed by council. So I would say that council has agreed to add those two men.
So we're looking for a motion to add uh, Mr. Hoover and Mr. Barnhart to the building committee as representatives of the uh, Water Authority, so Water and Sewer Authority.
So moved.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Suppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, anything else, Fred? Correspondence wise?
No, that's it.
Very good. I don't have any old business. Under new business, we have the approval of purchase of a police body camera from watch guard at a cost of eight hundred ninety-five dollars with one year warranty. We have a motion.
Do all our police officers have uh, body cams?
We have three.
So this is the fourth.
No, we have one that is uh, broken, so we're down to two right now.
So you share them?
Yes.
Is that a problem?
Yes, because there's there's been quite a few times recently when we're doing um, warrants and speed details and things like that where all of us are here.
I'd say approve the purchase.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the purchase. And it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Suppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We probably should figure out what we're gonna do to to get a fourth one, so that way each officer has their own camera. That's my personal opinion, not the opinion of all of council.
Even it all, at least it would have a, we'd have a backup uh, unit if nothing else. To the three that are in use.
Correct. All right, item number B or letter B, discuss proposal from Tucky Restoration for the modification of the borough office in the amount of eight thousand five hundred seventeen dollars eligible for reimbursement from the renewed Cumberland Grant. I guess the discussion probably should be down the road if we're looking at this building project. Um, is this a moot point? Um, while it costs the borough nothing really because um, because it's completely reimbursable uh, from the renewed Cumberland Grant. Uh, is it something we still want to continue with?
I think we should continue with it. If we're going to turn this over to the development, I think we talked about that at our building committee. If Fred, we can turn this over to maybe some help raise some funds for the economic development. Think you want, if you do that, has have a billion halfway decent shape to turn it over to, so I think it'd be a good investment.
But I thought Fred said maybe we should take another look at spending that money to do some of those items, but maybe I misunderstood.
Well, if it's if it's in need of it, somebody's gonna have to do it and the development committee sure doesn't have the money to do it, so. Where's it gonna come from?
Fred, what all were you, were you talking about? Doing the door? The hallway?
Basically, when you enter the front door, the foyer and the wall that would be to your left would be moved in about two and a half, almost three feet. The door would then be relocated to enter the office. A window would be created for customers to be waited on. That would include a um, a tempered glass window with a sliding tray drawer so that payments could be passed without touching hands or anything like that. The areas that would be disturbed would be uh, repaired with drywall, uh, new flooring and uh, complete repainting of the office. So any areas that were damaged or disturbed would be restored. The total price was eleven one sixty-eight. Mr. Tucky discounted that by two thousand six fifty-one, making the price eight thousand five seventeen. And the question I had, you know, given the fact that you're moving and that uh, it appears as a result of our meeting that it might occur even sooner than we thought. Is this something you still wish to proceed with?
My input would be that we not spend the money and that was somewhat of our our conclusion at the building committee meeting that uh, Lindsay uh, gave her in input as well into that, that she thought that what we have is is working well, uh, and since we're since we're looking, this would be a short term solution if if we're getting the new building. Uh, it is not worth the investment. Um, and to edge to edge point, yeah, the the to have the building in in decent shape, yes, I I agree and maybe there are some things we could do to improve the the uh, building a little bit, but this is, these are modifications that are specific to the purpose we're using it for now. They really wouldn't make it more attractive for what the the Economic Development Authority would want to do with it as as, to my understanding at least.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't know what the EDA is gonna look to put in there. Um, you know, if it's a restaurant, that's not gonna do anything for them. If it's a, you know, if it's an office building, then, you know, it it could be helpful, but we we don't know that. My my only concern is that, you know, this money is available to us. Um, it's a use it or lose it kind of thing and um, while we while we seem like we're going down this road um, towards towards a new building, uh, at the same time, you know, that there there could be hiccups along the way. And you know, that something that might take a year could take two or three. I just, you know, that's the only concern I have about it.
You said we could reapply for the money if we turned it back?
Well, in other municipalities and other counties, Jack, if uh, what they're they're doing is they're um, coming up with excess funds. They they have to get the money out and spent. There might be an opportunity for a second round of funds. We could reapply. There's no guarantee that we would receive funds, but.
So you're not, there's no preference here. If you turn back money that you, you know, you're first in line or something, it's just, you have that whatever amount of money is available, you can apply for it.
Just notify the county, we're returning it and uh, that's it. We're not doing the project.
Would the total project be taken care of by, talking say, if you use Tucky at eight thousand dollars, would that be taken care of?
Everything would be paid for. There would be no matching requirement by the borough.
It doesn't cost us anything really. And uh, and it makes the office better for us while we're there. Might be a year, might be two years, it might be three years before we move into a new office. Why not use it?
This is separate from the smart TV, right? This is, that's a different.
Is there anything else you can use the funds to do?
Not not that I'm aware of, Jack. They're they're going to help us with the uh, the AeroClave, we're going to get the smart TV, going to get reimbursement for the meeting room chairs, podium. That puts the meeting room in in decent shape.
All right, any any other discussion about it?
Clarification, so if we don't spend this money, well, if we do spend this money, it's money that's available for us from the state for just this purpose. If we don't spend this money, it goes back and we can, we could reapply for it as well as everybody else, but it's it it's not like we're spending our money. It's we're spending somebody else, we're spending somebody else's money. And um, OPM is much better than your own.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what's the downside to doing it?
Especially if you if you, the EDA might end up getting the building. You have something, you know.
Yeah, well, somebody said, I'm not sure those kinds of changes make it more useful for the EDA. Maybe it does, but I guess if if the money's just gonna get turned back and we can't use it for anything else, why wouldn't we just use it?
Well, how much longer are we gonna be in this building? Anybody knows?
Why does it matter if it's not our money?
Well, it's taxpayer money, but.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and everybody works hard to get it and we've got some. So we should probably spend it.
I I I think we just need to, you know, make it to say, we we can't wait too much longer because if if we wait too long, Tuckys won't be able to won't be able to do the job if they are doing it. And you know, I I think it's also right to let the county know if we're turning it back.
I'd say use it or lose it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I need a motion one way or the other, so.
It's not that, it's not like the money's uh, going away, it's just that we won't be using it. I realize, you know, oh, it's there, we've gotten the approval for it and so we could but I, my question is, is it the wisest use of the money? Um, and I just, just because something's there to spend is, doesn't mean it's the the wise thing to do and I think we we need to give a little thought to what's the the wise thing to do.
Well, even if it's only for a short time, if it protects the borough staff um, better than otherwise.
And it may not be so short, it might be two years.
Right now, the 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 improvements that we've made with the lockup window, locking the door are adequate. I've talked to the uh, the the two ladies in the office, Deb Piper and and Lindsay and and they're quite happy with what we have in place right now. They feel safe. It's not that they don't feel safe.
Could we spend this money for the conference room?
No, we're not going to do it. We've we've already, we've spent everything there.
Oh, okay.
I just can't see spending the money when it, when another municipality might be able to use it more so than what we are. But, you know, that's that's just my opinion. And who knows, too, maybe, you know, our building plans won't go through as quickly as what we thought, but.
Right, well, that's what I was thinking too, is, you know, they may not go through for a year. They may, you know, let's be honest, that might never happen, right?
Oh, I think it's gonna happen.
Might be three to five years before it happens.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be that long either, Mr. Darius. Um, you know, I happened to be at that meeting and um, it was a good productive meeting and um, you know, but.
Let's hope so.
All right, well, we we need a, need a decision to go one way or the other, so. Hold on, Mr. Mayor?
I I I to a certain extent agree with Mike, but I have a couple reservations and and one is we asked for this money for this specific purpose and the county granted it. They want to find us in a position. Now, the county's also under pressure to get this money dispersed and used. If if they find themselves in a situation where municipalities start giving money back, it may affect their ability to get more in the future. Uh, but I don't want to find us in a position where we reapply for funds for something and they say, well, remember what they did the last time?
Yeah.
I I just, I I'm torn. I I agree with with most of what Mike said, but on the on the other hand, I have these reservations about will this, if we say no, well, let's give the money back, is there a chance that down the road it will come back to bite us?
Yeah, good.
I guess my response to that would be i- in my experience um, trying to be wise with finances earns respect, not the other way around, so. The if we if we say, hey, our circumstances have changed, it's the other, from what we and we've turned the money. we, and we've turned the money in and then that doesn't follow through. I think that the, the notion that we were trying to be wise with the money and not just spend it because it was, it was there, that will, will get us some respect in that regard and, and give it, in, in my opinion, it would, it would actually put us in a more favorable light going forward, but that's.
I agree, Mike, and I agreed with what you said the first time. I just threw that out there to see. But not to balance it out, just as another point of view.
Ed, I believe you were making a motion.
My motion would be to, to turn the money.
Hold on, Ed, Ed was making a motion before the mayor, mayor spoke.
The motion that we accept the money and do the project. That's my motion.
I second your motion.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to move forward with the, with the, the office. The office modifications. We've already, we've already accepted the money. So so you have a motion to move forward with the office renovations with reimbursement from the renewed Cumberland Grant. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no?
No.
Motion, motion carries. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes on it. So that, that makes it four two. So motion carries. Any other discussion on that? Fred, do you need anything from our, on our end?
No, no.
Discuss the 2020 public meeting schedule.
You mean 2021, right?
Yes, that would be 2021. Good eyes there, Ed.
Well, we can discuss this year.
No, I don't want to. This year needs to end.
The only comment that I have on this is procedurally, you know, I, I see the, the recommendation. It's a work session and a regular meeting, work session and a regular meeting. There can only be one treasurer's report per month. They only get one bank statement a month. So it won't be two treasurer's reports. The way the bills are paid, the 10th of the month is a cutoff for the bill list. So the bill list gets prepared after the 10th. So you would not have bills at one meeting and bills at another meeting. You would have bills at the last meeting of the month. I go back to my original. If you're going to have a work session and I think our work sessions have been productive, just don't vote. If you need to vote, have a special meeting. But I think our work sessions have been productive. We've gone on right now, almost two hours. And on some of the issues tonight here, at least three of the issues, we've had 25 minute discussions. I think that's why we need a work session to hash a lot of this stuff out because here at the council meeting, we should be moving through the agenda much more rapidly. All these things should have been discussed and hashed out at the work session. So I, I think, you know, if we're going to have a work session, the original premise behind it was no votes. And then we said just a small vote. And then two votes. I think we just need to discipline ourselves and say, no votes. Just the discussion and then have a monthly meeting and, and do your motions and do your business at the end of the month. If there's something that urgent, then we can have a special meeting and vote on it.
But the special meetings going to cost, cost us money.
Well, I, I look back over the last year. I mean, we take votes on some things that really I don't think we need to take a vote on. I think we can wait till the end of the month. The, the only issue that I really looked back over the minutes and see was really important was we had a procedural change on something for the contract down at the park. We needed to make a, an award. We needed to change the date of an award. And we voted on that. That was absolutely essential because of the funding requirements for the county. But I think the work sessions are fine. I think we, we get a lot done at the work section. And then I think at the regular meeting, you know what your agenda is and you're ready to go.
So what we do about hiring somebody, because that was one of the other reasons why we voted at a work session was to, to hire to hire a new employee. Cause otherwise we were going to have to wait until the end of the month.
We were, I'm sorry. I didn't follow what you were saying there, Scott.
Well, another reason why we had to, to vote during a work session one time was because we were hiring somebody. And otherwise we were going to have to wait three weeks to, to make that hire.
That was an exception.
Right?
Your, your work sessions are advertised. They're advertised public meeting. You can vote in those public meetings. You can vote in a work session just as you can in a regular monthly meeting. And we have a disclaimer on our work session right at the top of the agenda that if it's an emergency matter or something has to be taken care of, we vote on. Now the question is, well, the public's not there. Well, whose responsibility is it for the public to be here?
That's their responsibility.
Correct. That's up to the citizens if they want to be here. So I, I think we've, you know, I think we advertise everything. It's legal. I think we're meeting our Marcus. Are we not in violation of the sunshine law?
No, we're, we're advertising it properly and.
Is there a reason why we can't put new business and old business at the end of the work session meeting?
No.
We can do whatever we want.
That way, if it's on the agenda, we can, we can address it and, you know, we can handle, like you said, it should, should be able to fly through it because you've had conversations about it. I, that just would make me feel better and then get rid of that whole disclaimer of, you know, we're not taking votes unless, unless it's, you know.
Problem solved, Marcus.
I just, I just want that. I just don't want to feel guilty that we're taking a vote.
I understand. I, and I think that was a problem with many of the council members back when it changed.
All right. So is everybody good with that? If we just put new, new business and old business at the end of work sessions, there may be new business and old business. There may not be. And with the expectation that we, we may be voting at a work session.
I think it's good practice to still do, do the major votes at the regular meeting, but for example, next, next week, we could authorize the parking ordinance being, being advertised. That's not, not a big deal. So you can do that.
You know, like Joey has her, her coat drive. We can authorize that.
Sure.
I, I don't want to wait until the end of November to authorize that. That's, that's what I'm getting at. You know, it, it's not a big, it's not a big issue, but it's, it's something that, you know, waiting till the end of November is not going to help anything.
I have a question. Why do we have to authorize it? Which is a damn good thing to do for the people.
Well, it depends on how she's going to distribute it. If she uses for a property or if, if we need traffic and, you know, it's, it depends how it's done. That's all.
Okay. I understand that.
Is everybody comfortable with that plan for 2021 meetings?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we're.
I have a question about that. Are we still going to do our meetings by way of Zoom?
That's up. Fred, I believe we should be ready for meeting in face to face if you're comfortable. Hopefully by the end of November.
Okay.
Now he, here's, here's a couple of things. I mean, we got to make sure that
Right.
Got to make sure everything works. Masks have to be worn inside that, that building. So I mean, that, that, you know, and that has to be advertised to the public too. We also have to understand too, that if we, if we max out on seats and in that office, we may have to turn people away. So.
Well, one of the purposes of getting this smart TV was to give people the option, right?
Correct. Yep. Yeah. So if, if you're, you know, if I'm not comfortable coming in, then I could still, I can still zoom in as, as a member of council and you can still also participate as a citizen as well.
Yeah, we just did that with the last EDA meeting with that strategy session. Some people were in the room. And some people were on Zoom and it worked. It was a little a little complicated because we didn't have that big smart thing. We were just working off my laptop and but it worked and I, you know, we had a good meeting. So it gives people the option of being there if they are comfortable doing it and people who are not comfortable or have you know, reasons for not being there. An option.
I think we should follow CDC rules.
We should.
Mask, distance. You know, all that good stuff.
It'll be a CDC rules are complicated. And when they're giving you the rules, you know, they're giving you various risk levels. And even having a meeting like the ones, you know, we have in our meeting room will be, if, if everybody is there and everybody is wearing a mask, it's, it's considered a higher risk meeting.
Right.
It, it's within the CDC guidelines. It's not the highest level of risk, but it's the second highest level of risk.
Fred, did, you haven't placed your order for the TV and stuff yet, have you?
Going to on Friday.
Okay. So if it's, you know, that, that might be in until Jackson gets things set up and everything. You know, the end of the month might be a possibility.
Yeah, I think that's a good, yeah.
So.
Could I add? Mike shared with me based upon the discussions here. A air filtration device with a HEPA filter system. It removes pathogens to point three microns. It would be able to basically cover the entire downstairs area. The cost of the unit is $1,472 with tax and shipping $1,560. We do have one of these devices here on the second floor, a much smaller one. Just for the two offices. But you know, there are air purification systems that you can buy that are portable.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea. Those systems are really important in a closed room.
Can that be applied for the, for the meeting room?
I, I would have to check with Kirk because that was not on our list of requested equipment.
All right. So is there, everybody comfortable with the direction that that's heading?
I'm concerned about the safety of it for safety.
I agree. I'm right there with you. And that's, that's one reason why we're, you know, make it available in multiple moods. So.
Not 18 year olds, you know.
Yep. All right. Anything else regarding meetings or anything like that? You're, you're good with the first and the, the fourth? Continuing with that on the first and fourth Tuesday? Is that correct? All right. Okay. So it, it looks like we can set up a schedule for next year then Fred, and we can have that ready to advertise closer to the end of the year. All right. Any, anything else from the, for the good of the order here?
Make the meetings sweet. Make the meetings short and sweet, to the point.
We often have to stop talking then.
All right. Anything else?
I make a wish we'd earned.
There we go, Joey. That's what I was looking for. All those in favor say aye.